Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would just make sure your phones are off, the ringers are off, that'd be real helpful. Sometimes they go off every once in a while. Roll call, please.
Kushner?
There.
Osborne?
Here.
Latari?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Euler?
Here. Approval of city council minute meeting stated February tenth, twenty twenty five.
Most people approve.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes. Adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt this presented.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes. Item number five, presentation, presentation of the Warrensburg R six school district. Sixteen point five million dollar bond issue information for the April eighth, twenty twenty five election presented by Dr. Steve Ritter, Superintendent of Schools. Welcome, Steve.
Well, thank you so much for taking a few minutes of time to hear our presentation greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Euler and our city council members greatly appreciate. So we're really excited about this opportunity. It is a sixteen and a half million dollar bond issue. We, we've spent just about a little over a year having conversations about some of the needs that we have for the district and for the future, when especially when it comes to our facilities and our programming and what we're able to offer our students. And so we're excited to come up with this plan to share with the community and and we're hoping that folks will be as excited as we are. So we know that we have a lot of common shared values in our community when we think about education and what we're when we think about our kids. We want to make sure that we have a safe learning environment for them. We want to make sure we're providing high quality education for all of our kids. We understand that that students need a strong foundation with early learning and in literacy, especially with literacy carrying over through all walks of life and throughout when we want our students to be lifelong learners and achievers and everything. So when we think about some of these values, it also brings up some of the challenges that we're facing as well right now because we'd love to be able to continue to grow, grow where we have values, but we know that we're running into challenges. We have two of our elementary, four elementary buildings are over one hundred percent utilization of space. So we're at the point where we have some what used to be closets are now providing educational services for some of our students. Where we have a limited access to early childhood education. We're at the point where we don't have room to grow our program and along with that, we're also missing out on a funding opportunity. We're kind of sitting at this, this point here where we're receiving state reimbursement for preschool programs when actually we could be collecting up here. So we have a sizable gap where if we had more room for more students, we actually would receive additional funding that would pay for our teachers and additional staff to be able to provide more opportunities for more students. We know that our community needs affordable childcare. We know that that we're constantly hearing from folks that they're looking for places to be able to send their kids, take their kids. And so if we're able to offer free or low cost early childhood educational opportunities along with that, then that's a, that's a win win for our community. And we know that there's the potential for some growth. We know that White Men Air Force Base is, is looking at having a boost in the number of people that are going to be associated with their programming over there. We know that we're continuing to see neighborhoods go in in our community and, and multi-family housing and everything. So we know that there's, there's some, some growth that's going to happen. And so part of this is that we're planning for the future, not just the here and now. So if, you know, when it comes to facilities and space, if you wait too long to where you're, you absolutely have to have the space here and now you're looking at a considerable amount of time when it comes to construction and putting plans in place and everything. So, so we're trying to get ahead of this. And the big feature for this bond issue is that we'd like to take this building down at the south side of town. It's got the Cash Saver logo on it. Used to have Woods and Parkers and a number of other names. But we'd love to be able to turn it into this. We'd love to turn that into an early childhood center. Over the last few months, we've gone through and we have secured through a sublease. So we're paying a portion of the current lease to the owner. But we have a sublease with Woods and, and so we have access to the building now. Additionally, with the owner, we have negotiated a purchase price at the end of the sublease process in twenty thirty two. And with the way that we have our funding set up, we have additional funds that will be able to set aside over the course of the next eight years that will be able to, to pay that off. So we're not going to have to come to the community to ask for any additional funding in order to, to make the purchase on that building. What we are asking for is, is for the, the bond issue to be able to renovate that building and give us an opportunity to expand. We have a number of images from the renderings from Insight Design Studio out of, out of Kansas City who we've been working with. And we're very excited about the opportunities that we'd be able to, to provide to our students. And, and also to have a, to have something on the south side of town there, have a, have a nice establishment there when people pull into town, see a nice new facility, new looking facility that'll be down there and, and provide us that opportunity. So we, we know that it's going to, we're looking to fund that, that early childhood center. When we talk about our space challenges that we have, we would be moving our preschool programs out of Maple, out of Maple Grove and out of Ridgeview. And we would be putting all those, those nine classrooms out there at the, the early childhood center. Additionally, we would be able to expand. It's going to be thirteen classrooms. We're going to add an integrated classroom, which is just a small number of students who have special needs. But then we're looking at adding space for sixty additional, sixty additional preschool students for the full day preschool program. So that's sixty more families that would be able to, to have some opportunities and be able to get kids in the door for some early learning. So we're excited about those opportunities. Additionally, we do have some roof replacements and some HVAC systems that need some upgrades. Our career center is the largest one with HVAC has been since the mid nineties, I believe it is since, since we've last had a replacement for the HVAC unit out there. So that's the big one there. And we have a number of smaller units around the district that, that need to be replaced. And we have some roof patching that needs to go on. Unfortunately, it was raining a little bit on our student section at one of the home basketball games recently. So things like that, that we want to make sure we shore up, keep kids safe and make sure we have good conditions inside the building. So we know we have some work to do. The nice thing about this is that we are set up that the bond, the bond issue, the tax rate would be able to remain the same at eighty two cents per a hundred dollars of assessed valuation. So we're excited to be able to do that without having to raise the tax rate at all. So it's a nice opportunity for, for us to be able to just continue that, that amount of debt into the future. So and be able to put, reinvest that into our, our youngest learners. So why are we focusing on early childhood education? If you do a quick Google search, you're going to be able to find all sorts of statistics out there that are going to support your preschool education. When you look at things like increased high school graduation rates, improved reading scores, you know, things like that, that definitely has the academic side, but even you'll look at statistics that have to do with even those who participate in preschool have a greater chance of making more income by the time they're age of forty. So if we're able to provide opportunities for kids at that foundational level to be able to build them up as they go through their schooling, it's a great opportunity for us and for our community. Additionally, we want to be able to expand not just our preschool program, but our award winning preschool program. They were recognized, our preschool program was recognized at the Missouri School Boards Association Conference as the twenty twenty four early childhood education program of the year for mid-sized districts. For the last fifteen years, it was only about thirty three, thirty five or so school districts that have been recognized. And we're proud to say that we're, we're one of them out of the, the five hundred and thirty five school districts that are across the state. So a great achievement by, by some wonderful people who, who do a great job day in and day out, working with our kids and providing with a strong foundation. Some additional benefits is that we are looking at that, that area down there. We're, we're having some conversations about if we can possibly transform some of the, the south side of that property into storage for our buses. Currently, we pay a lease. Well, the bus company pays a lease and passes the costs on to us. So we're looking at possibly storing our buses over there. We're going to have access to the gas station. Right now, all of our buses are going all the way out to MFA every day to refuel. So you're, it's costing the district additional time for the bus drivers and we're burning fuel in order to fuel back up. So just over time, those costs can come down a little bit. Additionally, this allows us to be able to do about, about four and a half to five million dollars worth of projects in the district that otherwise are going to have to come out of the annual budget, which gets in the way of us being able to continue to try to provide competitive salaries for our faculty and for our staff. So anything that we can do to be able to take some pressure off the annual budget certainly will, will help those causes along the way. And additionally, I don't think I mentioned the number that additional sixty students is reflective of about twenty to twenty five percent of our graduating classes that we have right now at the, at the, at the high school level. Our graduating classes for the next four years run between two hundred and fifty six students and two hundred and ninety eight. So if you're looking at about twenty, twenty five percent, being able to put a greater number of per class of students into our, into our preschool system and give them those opportunities. So, so it's a very straightforward project that we're looking at. There's, there's not a lot of, of a grand variety of things that are going into it. We're very focused on this. But we know that it's going to provide us with some opportunities. Like I said, that space is really getting cramped and over the last, the last couple of years, the district has added a number of classroom teachers into several of the buildings. We've added additional special education teachers into the buildings because of the increase in number of, of students qualifying for special services. So anything we can do to start to free up some space for folks, for, for us going forward is going to be a big benefit. We know that in at least one building this year, we're going to have to add another classroom because of the growth that we're seeing. So, so again, we're, we're trying to think about the future and being able to expand. We had conversations just about a year ago before we got really focused on this opportunity where we talked about different, different things that we would do, like small additions into some of our buildings. But as we worked through some of those things, originally we talked like at Ridgeview, we talked about, could we add another four or five, you know, four or five classrooms at Ridgeview and, and put them on the north side. Well, we can't do the way, do that the way that the sewer lines run. So we got to look back at the south side. Well, that means that we're going to then have to tear out the drive that goes behind the building and then we're going to have to put in a new drive that goes further around the building. Things like that, that, that would not necessarily be cost effective. Plus we're putting twenty, potentially twenty twenty six additions on to buildings from, you know, the sixties and seventies. And at some point you don't have, have it where the building is going to, to, to function fully. So so and then this also avoids us having to do redrawing boundaries. That was another conversation that we had was would we redraw boundary lines because of our space limitations? And we know that families are moving into neighborhoods and moving into places in town based on where, where their kids would be able to go to school. And so if we were to change up those boundary lines, even with just keeping our system as it is right now, or we did something very drastic where we went to pre K through five across all four elementary buildings and then did renovations, then it's an even bigger redrawing of the boundary lines. So this gives us an opportunity to keep some normalcy for our families. It allows to open up space in a number of our buildings. It allows us to provide greater access to early childhood education, which is a very big push in Missouri. That is one of the four priorities in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we're, we're glad that we can, we can continue on that vision that they have at the state level and be able to work forward with that here at the local level. So no, I just threw a lot of information at you, but what questions might you have?
Just out of curiosity, what would be the turnaround once you get the building or take access? When, how, what would be the turnaround time on getting that up and going?
Great question. So if, if everything goes perfectly, there may be a chance that we'd be able to get some students into that building by January one of twenty six. Otherwise, it would be the fall of twenty six. We don't know with our youngest learners who need a lot of stability and, and routines and things like that. We don't know that moving them buildings in the middle of the year would be the greatest thing for them. However, we may be able to look at, can we, can we get some students into the building there from those expanded offerings? We talked about, we'd be adding three classrooms of, of an all day program. Could we then maybe look at getting that started in January? But we, we'd have to make sure that everything was on time for us to be, do that. So, so that's a, that's a knock on wood. That'd be great to do it, but definitely by the fall of twenty six, we'd, we'd be rolling and ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
And how many classrooms did you say you anticipate being there?
Thirteen.
Okay.
Thirteen. Right now, we currently have nine. Like I said, we'd be adding one of the, one smaller class, the integrated classroom. And then we'd be adding three, three full day programs with twenty students apiece.
Any questions, any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Ritter.
Yeah, thank you. Please reach out anytime if you have any questions. If you'll excuse me, my daughter is going through climb high graduation right now on the other side. I'm going to sit back over there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item six point one. An ordinance authorized the city manager and city clerk to execute change order number one with Constable Sanitation Inc. for solid waste and recycling services for residential collection services presented by Barbara Carroll, Director of Community Development. Hello, Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. There's two items on your agenda this evening dealing with the solid waste. One is the, the first one, this one is dealing with a change order number one with our contract with Constable Sanitation Inc. And the next item on your agenda, the second item dealing with solid waste is an ordinance amending ordinance fifty nine twenty regarding chapter eleven, which is the rules and regulations that you all adopted in December regarding garbage and trash in the city of Warrensburg. So there is some overlap between the two items and we've provided one joint council letter. So I'm going to walk you through that council letter and we'll start with the beginning. The items included in the change order. So all of these items, whether in the change order or within the chapter eleven ordinance fifty nine twenty amendment, all of these items have come about as more details have become solidified in, in defining and in building out the program since September ninth. So the first versions of the the contract was included with the RFP that went out last year, right about this time was due in April. So work on that began over a year ago at this point. And not all the details of our program, including what our billing capabilities and software capabilities would be, were known at that time. Not even all of that was known in December. And so as that has become known and more items have been developed, then these, these items have presented themselves as, as things we needed to go back and do a change order on to, to clarify and make certain there would be no confusion going forward. First item in the change order number, the first item is in section two point one of the contract. And I've got, I know you don't have it in your packet. It is online from September, but this is the full copy of the contract. If, if any of you need to look at that as we're going through. So section two point one is the definition section and this would be a change order number one amends the definition of residential service unit in order to expand that definition and clarify that each unit, each dwelling unit within a building, a residential service unit is considered its own residential service unit. So for instance, a duplex is going to be two residential service addresses. And so that changes to the definition of residential service unit. So that if you were a fourplex, that's four units. If you're a duplex, that's two units. If you're a single family, that's one unit. So making it clear that each dwelling unit inside the structure is its own unit. Second change item is in section eight point four. And this is expanded to include, so this section allowed for fourplex waivers. And this is language has been added to allow that to also include homeowners association waivers where the homeowners association was the contracting entity for trash service for the entire subdivision, all the units in the subdivision prior to September ninth, twenty twenty four. So we only know of one instance of that. Well, we know of two instances of that. One would like to be in our program. One Savannah Commons would like to opt to not be in the program to wave out. They were providing trash service at the homeowners association level prior to September ninth. We, we've talked with them for a couple of months and at this point would, would have them wave out. Many of those units are fourplexes, but there are some that are single family on the west side. This would be for the whole subdivision because they were acting on behalf of the whole subdivision with that contract at the beginning. So in the event that there are other HOAs that would meet that requirement and qualify, they would need to come forward prior to April first, twenty twenty five and request to wave out. We don't think there are any others. I think particularly as carts have been rolling out this week, I would know by now, but to our knowledge, we, we just have Savannah Commons at this point. And then the third change item is to section forty two point one, which is on invoicing. And at the time this was, and this was revised in the, in the month or so prior to September ninth, but even at that point, we had not done much, if at all, any configuring on the software and weren't sure and weren't sure where we would be with our address list and how accurate that would be at the beginning of the service. And so, um, it, it, that language in it talks about, the existing language talks about making a payment. Let's see. That the city would make a payment on or before March thirty-first and then have a true-up payment, uh, later in April to true up the March billing and, um, then would proceed to report after that on the fifteenth of the month and for monthly invoicing subsequent to that. It's quite confusing as to when you would have, uh, after the true-up payment, when you would have your first real payment and it would start in the regular monthly rotation. And so, uh, within the last month, uh, as we've come to know, our home count, our address, our addressing, we're much more comfortable with all of that. And, uh, the contractor and I discussed changing this to just say, we'll provide the home count. That's, if that's originally contemplated in the original order, or original contract. We'd provide a home count on the first of the month. They will invoice us based on that home count on the first of the month. And then we will pay by the following fifteenth of the following month. So giving us close to forty-five days to pay, we would pay earlier than that, uh, typically, but that would be the outer limit of our payment schedule. So we're going to be invoiced on the first of the month, paid by the fifteenth of the following month. Uh, that will be much easier for them and for us to, to, uh, manage, uh, the reporting, the tonnage reports. Those requirements are still in there. This is the timing of them won't be a little different. So those are the items related to just, uh, the, the change order. And that's the ordinance that you have on your agenda at, at this item. Um, do you want me to continue to talk about the chapter eleven, the fifteen-nine ordinance, fifty-nine twenty amendment? Or do you want to ask me questions about this before we move on?
Let's, uh, any questions on this right now?
Nope.
Jan?
No, uh, the only thing I'm wondering, we're going to, um, approve an ordinance and then we're going to approve a resolution. We're gonna do two different things.
There's two different ordinances. The first one that is the one he's read for the first time so far is an ordinance approving the change order.
Okay.
So that's what is on, right now you're considering.
Okay, right, thank you.
Should we go on and just?
That's fine.
Yes. You want me to keep going?
Okay. Yes, please.
So the ordinance amending ordinance fifty-nine twenty. And fifty-nine twenty is the ordinance that was adopted in December of last year. This is the ordinance that, uh, lines everything out in chapter eleven. And, uh, some of that has to do with this residential service program and some of that is for everything that's not in this program. So there are a lot of parts to chapter eleven and we're touching just a few of them with this ordinance this evening that will amend it. So that, this ordinance amends four pieces of ordinance fifty-nine twenty. Um, the first part, uh, in your ordinance is section one, and that's going to amend section eleven dash one A. Again, this is the definition section. And again, we're amending residential service unit in the exact same manner we did that in the contract change order. So that is one where the two overlap each other. Uh, the second piece that we're amending in chapter eleven is section eleven dash thirty-eight F. And this is the one that says, um, where we talk about billing and, and monthly billing, uh, this section, what we're adding is that last sentence, that separate solid waste and sewer bills can be provided for rental units. So we're spelling that out in, by adding that sentence to section F. Uh, section eleven dash thirty-eight K. Uh, this is one where we have added some language. This is the section on vacation holds. And the current ordinance reads that a vacation hold can be placed on an account for a period of time of no less than three months and no more than five months. And then says that count must be, uh, paid in full and current at the time the request is made and that, uh, fee would be set by resolution. Your proposed ordinance would add the sentences that say a month shall be, shall run from the first calendar day of the month to the last calendar day of the same month. And then it also adds the sentence that one vacation hold will be allowed per city fiscal year, which begins in October one and runs to the following September thirtieth. Uh, those two sentences did not appear in the original. It was discussed that we would allow one a year. We didn't state what the timing of that would be and staff is proposing that it be per fiscal year. The discussion had been that this was an opportunity or, or really, uh, uh, the, the intent of this was for snowbird, people who winter elsewhere. And so, um, running it on the fiscal year would allow that one timeframe that close, could closely match when they're planning for that vacation time, I forget anyway. So, um, that, obviously your decision, but, uh, if, if you want to do that on a calendar year or something, let us, let us know on that. And then the last section that's being amended in, um, this proposed ordinance is section eleven dash thirty-nine. And this is again where we've allowed, uh, added language to allow for the homeowner association waiver. And so, uh, same concept as we just discussed with the, the, uh, change order uh, item. So tho- that's another one that overlaps with the change order. Your questions about this?
I'm just curious, how many units are in that one HOA, I guess?
In the Savannah Commons? Here at, um, sixty-four units.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from us? Jim?
Nope.
Hey, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Hey, we have an ordinance in front of us.
Motion to move to second reading by title only. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute change order number one with Constable Sanitation Inc. For solid waste and recycling services for residential collection services. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kushner, ooh, Euler, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six point two, an ordinance amending ordinance fifty-nine twenty regarding chapter, chapter eleven, garbage and trash of the code of city ordinances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Motion to move to second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance fifty-nine twenty regarding chapter eleven, garbage and trash of the code of city ordinances of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven point one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, supporting and authorizing staff to apply for a fiscal year twenty twenty-five American World War Two Heritage Cities Grant presented by Barbara Carroll.
Yes, and I have Kristen Dyer, city planner here, who works with the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, she's gonna jump in if I get this wrong, because I mostly think about trash these days. Um, so this is, as you'll recall, many of you, most of you, I think, were on council last year when about this time, we were announced as a World War Two Heritage City, uh, in a joint application that, um, our planner put together on behalf of both the city and the county, um, the university, white men all had input on that application. And so that is one city per state who has given this designation. And for the state of Missouri, Warrensburg and Johnson County have this designation. So this grant program has come forward, uh, and only heritage, World War Two heritage cities are, can apply for it. And so in working with, uh, the different groups that have, uh, interest in this, including, uh, the WCVB, they would like to put it forward, um, from the city, an application for the grant that would include then money to hire a research assistant for, uh, about five months. Would be, uh, in the HR vernacular, a temporary part-time, a temporary seasonal type employee. And, um, that person would do, uh, three different things for us primarily. Um, they will, uh, I gotta read this, I might get it wrong. Um, work on, uh, discovering new information, existing research and writing content for our G I S story map on the city's website. Um, they would also work with the C V B on a, on the social media presence for this designation. And then, uh, along with some traveling banners, um, to promote it. And then as well, um, develop a lesson plan for grade school level students within the county to promote, uh, Warrensburg's home front efforts in line with the National Park Service requirements. And so, uh, it's a research assistant position. We would hope to hire a grad student from this area, uh, to do this work. And then, um, the grant is fully, uh, they're funded by, by the grant. The, it is, there is no match requirement. So we do not have to have a cash match or an in-kind match. Um, so the wage would be fully paid for by the grant. When the grant runs out, then that position would go away. It would not become a long-term or a regular position with the city. It would be, uh, just a grant-funded position. It is very consistent with the Historic Preservation Plan that the city adopted last year as well and our strategic plan. The application requires a resolution from the city in order to include it in the application. And if approved as that resolution, then this money, though we will get the money from the grant, we have to budget both revenue and the expenses into the next fiscal year city budget. Uh, if, if this ordinance, resolution is approved and it will hit the city's fiscal twenty-six budget. So we would include that in the upcoming process to, uh, start then in the budget that would start on October one. Do you have questions about the program? Because Kristen can answer them.
And if we, if we receive the grant, we would receive it in twenty-six.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Would this create a webpage or something for information of like the, those soldiers killed in action?
So, um, the existing War Two Heritage Story Map, it would be using that content and then expanding on it more. So, um, G I S does a way to add pages. Um, we did not put specifically what we wanted to put in there. We're gonna let the research assistant and his findings be able to tell us we need, what we need to add, expand on or what will be, um, likable in such a way. We did consult with Dr. Taylor, who actually wrote one of the white papers for people to become a heritage city. So he's very familiar with the program, so he's gonna be kind of our guiding light on, on content as well.
Okay, any other questions?
Exciting.
Nope. Phil John, thanks for his help. He's a big help to the city, so.
He said, "Thank you for thinking of his graduate students."
Thank you.
Motion to approve resolution. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight, appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. Uh, no one signed in. Miss Tue?
Thank you.
Item nine, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council. I just, I, I just have a question. It's not to be answered tonight, but just, um, I noticed last night we have about sixteen streetlights out of the Evergy Streetlights. How do we get them to? Can we, or, again, I don't need the answer tonight, but what, what's the process? It's, it's pretty dark down there and having sixteen lights out is, doesn't help a lot situation.
All right, thank you.
Any other? City staff updates, ten point one, city staff up, update administrative services department. Uh, ten point two, city staff update, city clerk.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I do not have any update at this time.
Thank you. Ten point three, city staff update, community development, January twenty twenty-five activity report.
I have nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Ten point four, city staff update, fire department. Ten point five, city staff update, parks and recreation department, Chris?
Let me get this time.
Ten point six, city staff update, police department.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, just one update, um, with Sergeant, uh, Clint Polly leaving, going to Independence. We're currently running the process. We have two individuals that are interested. That'd be, uh, Corporal Clayton Townsend and Corporal Will Blavens. Um, Will Blavens is our acting sergeant right now, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
What does Independence have that we don't?
Really well enough. I refrain from answering. Thanks, Chief. Uh, item ten point seven, city staff update, public works department.
I have no updates at this.
Item ten point eight, city staff update, Warrensburg Convention and Visitors Bureau, probably nothing there.
She's at a conference, so provided a written.
Okay, thanks. Item eleven, city manager report.
Yes, so, um, tomorrow will be two weeks for me.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. I feel welcomed by, uh, staff and, and the community. It's been great. Um, as I told you, as I committed to you as part of the interview, I, I do everything I could to hit the ground running. I started with asking interim city manager Kristen Norman to pull up my calendar and she did a terrific job of that. I have to count, but I, I think about, about forty meetings with stakeholders, staff departments that I do in that, in that two-week period. So, um, uh, I guess it's a, uh, a blessing and a curse with my family still being in Salina. I have plenty of free time to meet during the day and get some work done before I have to work hours. And so I would, I, I can tell you that staff is working, just because they don't have updates, doesn't mean that we don't have a lot going on. Um, and my focus at the moment has been getting up to speed on the wire, uh, watching Barb do her thing on trash and helping where I can there. And then kind of diving in finances and figuring out a balance. Feeling like I'm getting there, but, uh, exciting, a lot of good things going on.
Any questions for Mike?
Yep. Glad to hear.
Yes.
We'll let y'all be easy tonight.
And we expect further city council meetings to be this short, too.
Still a little research. From there, five hours long.
Oh, my goodness.
No.
That used to be here too, but we have changed.
And I do notice you have a boy scout back there. We don't know who he is, but I guess you got a clear bead is what I understand. Yeah.
That's what we did.
I'd explain that. Explain what a clear bead is.
So scouts, when they camp out low zero, uh, they get a clear bead. And, uh, there was, uh, this is kind of a very, very impromptu thing they did on Wednesday night into Thursday morning.
Because it was so cold.
Yeah, so they, uh, it was next seven, Thursday morning when they all got up, so, and they camped in tents and.
This is your son?
Yeah.
And you let him do that?
Yeah, I encouraged it. If he wanted to do it. So.
That's great. How do you, how do you smell warm? I wa- I was in the house and I was cold.
They're prepared.
Yeah.
So in addition to the clear bead, did they also get frostbite and hypothermia?
No, they, they take it through this part.
Okay.
All right, if there's other business, we adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.